This is Commissioner Bloomfield. This April twentieth twenty twenty two meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. Due to COVID nineteen concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted on the planning commission webpage at boko, B O C O dot org slash PC. There will be opportunity to remotely provide public comment on dockets listed on the agenda during the respective virtual public hearing portions for each item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each docket on the agenda.
Good afternoon, commissioners Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director with Community Planning and Permitting. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce two new planning commissioners that have joined the planning commission and their first meeting is today. We have Chris Whitney and Connor Kennedy. So they were recently appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and will be starting their first terms on the planning commission. So welcome to the board and we can do some more informal introductions at a later time. But thanks for joining us and just wanted the the rest of the planning commissioners just to be aware of your fellow new members. Thanks.
It's Kim and welcome to Connor and Chris. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. So just respond in the affirmative. Mark in fields here. Sam Fish to get him on. I also don't see Anne Gavin McMillan.
Here.
Leishen Gargano.
Here. Turning off the meat button. No, sorry.
Connor Kennedy.
Here.
Chris Whitney.
Here.
And I think that's everyone.
Not me.
Oh, sorry, David. I saw Dan Hilton was in there and I knew that wasn't right, but so David Chu.
Here.
Okay, so reminder to planning commissioners, please identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. All votes will be real callable votes. Please keep your video on when possible during hearing. Please remain on mute until you are ready to speak. When you begin speaking, please identify yourself as a planning commissioner, as in this is planning commissioner Mark in field. It may help to keep your participant list open in Zoom so you can see who is speaking. The person that is speaking will be bolded. So the first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Anyone? No. Is there a motion in the second to prove them approve them? And members do not have to have been present at the previous meeting to act on this.
A second. Commissioner Gargano.
Did we get it first?
I missed. Sorry.
Do you want to be the first?
I will be the first that we approve them.
Commissioner McMillan, a second.
Okay, let me any discussion or I'll just go to a vote. Mark Bloomfield, I. Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
David Chu.
Hi.
Connor Kennedy.
Hi.
Chris Whitney.
Hi.
And Leishen Gargano.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, any staff updates?
I can Sanchez, Community Planning and Permitting, no staff updates today. Thank you.
Okay. So then we will get into our items. We have three agenda items. Scheduled for today's planning commission meeting. At this time, I'll take the opportunity to explain the public hearing process. There will be opportunity to provide public comment remotely on the subject items for which we have specified. We will take public testimony during public hearing portions for each item. The order of presentation will be to hear from staff first, next to the applicant, and then we'll move to accepting public comments from any individuals who wish to speak. Some people may have signed up in advance and we will call on you first. If you did not sign up for public comment, you may sign up in the chat. Please your director comments to the board. The chair will direct any questions that arise during the hearing to the appropriate party. Once we have heard all testimony, the public hearing will be closed. The planning commission will then discuss the application and votes take action. The all the all members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the PC homepage before. Once those have signed up in advance spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you have joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who is joined by computer and sign up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen by a video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room. If you dial into the meeting by a phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you. When we call on you to provide comments, when it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted either via computer or phone, if you have called in, please state your name and address for the record before providing comments. Each speaker will be allowed in three minutes to speak. A timer will be at the end of full time. Time can be pulled at three minutes per person for a maximum of ten minutes. You will need to provide the names and addresses of the other people up to three others besides yourself who are in attendance and donated the time to anyone who is pulling time to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in person here. A reminder that comments are to be limited to the specific docket item discussed and that common courtesy will be observed. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. First, the chat box is for speaker signup only. Please remain on mute when possible. Moderators will mute you if we see that your connection is the source of background votes. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during the public. Applicants, please have your presentations pulled up and ready to go. I will announce when we are ready for you to present and at that time you can share your screen. Okay, so we'll start with our first docket item. This is public hearing for docket SU dash two two dash zero 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 one Jacobs Vacation Rental. We will hear from Ian Brighton on staff since present your report.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen here. Hopefully this works. All right. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Um, okay, so I'm presenting on SU twenty two dash zero 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 one that Jacobs Vacation Rental at thirteen oh one Country Road eighty four west. And this is my first planning commission hearing, so I'm it's nice to see also some new planning commissioners as well. We're all in this for the first time together, so it's great. Oh, it didn't go down. Hold on.
Ian, this is Kim. Will you please introduce yourself for the record if you don't mind?
Absolutely. I forgot to do that. Yes, my name is Ian Brighton. I'm a planner two at Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting. There, did that work?
Yep.
You're looking at the next slide. Okay, great. So this is the vicinity map. The subject parcel is located just outside of the Wild Basin Trailhead area out of Rocky Mountain National Park off of Highway seven north of Allen's Park. Project overview of applicant owners are Emily and Callan Jacobs. It's on a forestry zone on zero point three two acres and platted area, the Copeland subdivision. There's a one thousand five hundred and eight square foot residence existing. The proposal has been revised. Initially, they proposed for two hundred and seventy five days of vacation rental for up to seven guests with a minimum stay of two nights. However, through this process, they've revised that to be a hundred and fifty days per year for up to four guests with a minimum stay of two nights. So four dash five oh seven E of the land use code stipulates where we need to do special use review for vacation rentals. They are within a forestry zone and in a less than five acre unsubdivided area. Something I had to research as part of this is that subdivisions prior to nineteen seventy two are not considered subdivided under the land use code. Copeland Lake was subdivided in nineteen fourteen and is there therefore not considered subdivided and eligible for a vacation rental. I need to fix this slide. There is two sleeping rooms that they proposed. And so there's actually two sleeping rooms plus a manager would
This is Commissioner Shu. I I think we're still seeing the second slide.
I am so sorry. Yes, let me. All right, there we go. I'm so sorry about that. We're down to this slide here. Okay. Can you see that?
The details.
All right, thank you. I've had trouble getting it on the right monitor. So anyways, I'm working with it here. Okay, so yes, this slide isn't correct, though. Down at the parking requirements, I need to change that to say two sleeping rooms plus a manager equals three spaces. All right, so now we're looking at the location map showing that it's the parcels located off of County Road eighty four west. This is a an aerial of the region. And this is a close up aerial, a little bit pixelated, not keep in mind these property lines are pretty far off from what is the lot lines that they actually own. So the property lines actually should be quite a bit further to the west than what we're showing on our GIS maps, but which is often the case in these mountain areas. They're they're often inaccurate. This is the cop plan showing that the subject parcel has some critical wildlife habitats, significant natural communities and is near a protected visual corridor. This is showing that it's in the forestry zone. This map is showing public lands adjacent. Rocky Mountain National Park is the most prominent to the directly to the west. There's some county conservation easements nearby as well as some private conservation easements. These show geological hazards which are not within the subject parcel. Here's the contour showing a jump sloping site. This is the narrative. This was the original narrative explaining the two night minimum stay with seven people and between two hundred twenty five to two hundred seventy five nights. However, revised narrative I indicates that they are now only applying for a hundred and fifty nights for four people. And also the two night stay. Here's a floor revised floor plan that they provided showing two bedrooms, a living room and a dining area and a kitchen. This is the parking plan they've provided, and this is a more accurate depiction of their lot lines showing that the property boundary actually extends further to the west and that they do have parking access. There's spots for two cars and a manager there identified. This is a photo showing the parking area. We're looking south and we're we're sort of to the west of looking kind of more on the west side of their their property here. This is looking back at at that last vantage point, looking north at the parking area. This, the day I was out there, it was very snowy and hard to see the parking availability, but you can see the access road coming in and the parking area with the residents right there. This is looking southwest. This is looking northwest. This is looking north. So road access, there's an old easement identified on the original Copeland Lake subdivision plot showing the Estes Park Highway at one time was designed for this area. However, at this time, it's more of a private drive access that they have historic use of and Jen's on the line here too, if we need to get more in depth with that. But essentially they have that easement plus the historic drive access that they can access from both the east and west side. In the summers, in the winters, they can only access from the east. I've highlighted the road since it's a little hard to see on the aerial in in yellow. Referrals from building included requirement that a recent re roof obtain a building permit that the applicant must be compliant with vacation license requirements and schedule inspections for that. Parks and open space had no concerns. Wildfire staff required wildlife wildfire partner certificate and that they display prevention and evacuation information for renters and as well as prohibited outdoor fires. Public health noted that the existing septic system serves three neighboring properties sized for four two bedroom cabins each. Therefore stipulated that they can only rent to a maximum of four people, which they've agreed to access and engineering. Stipulated that with two bedrooms, we need to see three spaces for three parking spaces. All parking must be on the subject property and one point, we needed a revised parking plan, which they provided us and what what we've seen. We also need to get a referral from Allen's Park Fire Department confirming emergency access from both sides of the road as well as a notarized AI MA agreement. Rocky Mountain National Park encouraged the establishment of a designated smoking area, bear proof garbage and recycling, quiet areas and dark sky from emotion activated lights. We had one comment from an adjacent property owner who had initial concerns over the septic capacity. The late hours and of guests increased traffic, food storage and fire safety. However, after speaking with the applicant, she felt these concerns were mitigated to due to the revised proposals. I'll go over just some of the criteria that we evaluate. Number two, that the use is compatible with the surrounding area. And the proposed use we feel is is in alignment with the historic use of the site seasonal cabins. There's no site disturbance or construction proposed. Number six, the use will not require a level of community facilities and services greater than that which is available. So that's been mitigated by limiting to the four people maximum to match the existing septic capacity. The use will support a multimodal transportation or number seven, excuse me, the use will support multimodal transportation system and not result in significant negative impacts to the transportation system or traffic hazards. So we've identified that legal access is demonstrated by historic use of the shared road and that the proposed trips per day will not have negative impact over what would be typical of a residence, permanent residence in that location. Also, the condition letter, condition of obtaining a letter from Allen's Park Fire Protection District confirming that emergency access is available. Number eleven, the use will establish an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental and societal needs by minimizing the consumption of and inefficient use of energy, materials, minerals, water, land and other finite resources. We feel the use is comparable to resources utilized by a single family resident. Number twelve, I won't read this whole piece, but essentially it refers to natural hazards. And with the conditions of the obtaining a wildfire partner certificate prohibiting outdoor fires and providing wildfire prevention and evacuation information for guests, we feel this is mitigated and the condition can be met. Therefore, we our recommendation is for the community planning and permitting staff to recommend that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the county commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Ian. Any commissioners have any questions? We will go ahead with asking if the applicant is present and if they have a presentation for us.
This is Anna Milner staff. The applicant is present and she has been promoted to panelist.
And I apologize if I have applicants name in front of me.
Emily Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs, if you'd like to go ahead and state your name and address for record and go ahead and presentation.
Hi, are we a little bit delayed?
A little bit.
Can you understand us? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, otherwise we have the phone called in if needed.
Okay, well, so far we're okay.
Okay, so I am Emily Jacobs. My husband, Ian, were the owners of the proposed vacation rental. We prepared a brief statement over our proposal. As stated in our article attached, we are a young family from the Kansas and Nebraska area that had a dream of one day owning a mountain cabin. For years, we simply visited the mountain as guests, but now we come home to the mountains as often as we can. We have thrables while owning this cabin. Our first goal is to bless our children with memories of growing up in the mountains and all the beauty it holds. Our second goal is to provide the same blessing to anyone that may visit our cabin. Our third goal is to have our income help fund our foundation Leap of Faith, a foundation to assist adoptive families and birth family as adoption is a very important part of our family. Along with our three main goals, our hideaway comes with a great amount of respect for the generations that have passed us and a longing to find countless memories for the generations yet to come. We have a great longing to pass this property down through generations and will do our part to keep the hideaway in tip top shape to ensure this. When we acquired this property in late June of twenty twenty one, we didn't waste a single minute to seek licensure to open our house up as a licensed vacation rental. Along with getting our documents that are required gathered, we also upgraded the interior of the cabin to match the beauty of the mountains and wildlife outside and put on a top of the line fire grade roof as soon as we took ownership to protect our investment and the mountains full of richness that are around us. While acquiring our documents, we and hope permits, we've also had the privilege of meeting all of our neighbors. They all quickly began to see that we weren't just there to take a buck, but we indeed were in the mountains because we love and respect all that they hold. The initial worry was that we wouldn't ever be at our cabin. They quickly realized this wasn't the case. As I saw our cars up in the driveway during the deep snow and the most beautiful days. We were working on our property, decorating it for the holidays, crossing snow shoe paths and just being woman the mountain. Our conversations were informative and value. Thanks to communication with all the neighbors that we can see from the front doorstep, we have addressed issues such as fire, wildlife, road use, quiet hours, septic system, property boundaries and other neighborhood issues more deeply than we would have otherwise found the priority to do. Due to the conversations, if accepted, we will take steps to have typed up to display appropriate information so that all of those in the area, whether walking on two legs or four, are respected to the highest degree when we are and aren't there. Signs will specifically address the concerns of air safety, wildlife safety and proper trash disposal. We feel these topics be the most pressing to help educate and stay our property to ensure the safety of everyone around us. We've also prepared the information Boulder County Health has sent to us to place our bathrooms and kitchen regarding the septic dos and don'ts as well as the wildfire prevention information sent to us from wildfire partners along the good neighbor guidelines and why safety provided by Boulder County. Thanks to the open communication team that has been put in place in neighborhood, our neighbors look most wanting to know us further. Let's help us keep eye on our property, whether it's our footsteps or us that are at the cabin. Our cabin yield to us purchased due to its location to be within walking distance of fly the sound of the Saint Brain, the National Park and all the mountains have to offer right out the front door is what caught our eye. This is also that we want anyone who may stay at our property come for to utmost respect. We will appeal to the greatest with a family unit who wants to be in the middle of God's beauty, the mountains. Those families made from a bigger city, down the road or across the country, but either way they'll come to experience the mountains. City center. Our advertising will be as such that it will encourage families, not partygoers. Can you hear me now?
Cutting out there for a minute and then we kind of lost your sound.
This is Commissioner Shu. Maybe if you turned off your video, it would help.
Okay. Can you hear us better?
And it is the
Yeah, that was better for me.
Yeah.
Own option available?
Yes, Emily, this is Anna Milner staff. If you prefer to try the phone, we can also do that. You'll just need to mute yourself. Would you like me to try that for you?
And if they can hear us this way, I'm fine with this.
This is better for me. This is Commissioner Ariano.
Okay.
Perfect.
Wonderful. And could someone tell me the last thing you heard?
I'm trying to remember what the last thing was.
We were talking about being appealing to the family. Is that a good place to start? I don't have much left.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, so our advertising will be as such that will encourage families and not partygoers to stay at the cabin and to practice common courtesy while on our property. Again, thanks to this process of applying for the permit, we have already applied for the wildlife partners mitigation certificate as required along with the EZ BP permit from Boulder County to inspect our re roof. We have and will continue to educate, address and complete the process to make our rental the best situation for us, our guests and our neighboring area around us. Although although the research has been much and the steps have been many in this spending process, we now understand that this was a process to help educate us while completing the requirements, we were able to learn about our cabin, our surroundings, our structure, our neighbors and the mountains, which we are in more deeply. We plan to use our education gain to continue to help educate any guests we have in the future as this process was worthwhile and we thank you.
Okay.
That's all we have prepared. Are there any questions?
Any commissioners have questions for the applicants? Seen a lot of good chicken, so we'll go ahead and thank you to the Jacobs and we will go ahead for public comment. Let's see. We will go through the folks who have signed up in advance first and then call on people in the chat box to then take any comments from people who are drawn by phone. And we'll go through the public comment procedure again. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from planning commission homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and the docket number in the chat box to the right. As each person who is joined by computer and sign up to speak is unmuted and Zoom will adjust your participant's status so that you can speak and be seen by a video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in the room as attendee. If you dialed into the meeting by a phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when we and we will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you're unmuted, either by a computer or phone, if you have called in, please state your name and address for the record before providing comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will be at the end of your speaking time. A reminder that comments are to be limited to the specific docket item being discussed and that common courtesy will be observed. Time can be pulled at three minutes per person. I don't see, Anna, do we have anybody signed up other than Mr. Yagi right now?
We do not.
Okay, I'm not going to go. Okay, so we'll open it up to Mr. Yagi who has signed up.
This is Anna Milner staff. I don't see that Mr. Yagi is present via video. I do see an unidentified caller who has raised their hand, seven two zero five eight one three three seven four. Is that you, Mr. Yagi? And if it's not, we will call on you in a moment. Okay, so as Mr. Yagi is not present, Chair Bloomfield, should we potentially move on to this call in individual here?
Yes.
Okay, so the person dialed in on the phone, please make sure you're unmuted by pressing star six and unmuting your phone itself. We see your hand raised to speak, so you're free to do so at any time.
And I'll. It looks like the caller just unmuted.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. My name is Ilona Dotterber. My address is two seven zero five Regis Drive in Boulder and I also own property in Allen's Park, Colorado, which is just down the street as it goes in the mountains here from the applicant. I I'd just like to say that I think staff did a good job of of assessing and appraising the this short term rental and I think the applicant did a bang up job of understanding short term rentals and how they're to be, how they should be handled in the mountains, being very careful about fire mitigation and other things like that. I would also note that Boulder County Planning has provided certain information to applicants about garbage disposal, wildlife protection and other items that I think all the applicants should use because it is information from Boulder County and it should be uniformed throughout the short term rentals. I would also like to note that the county sent out fifty six letters and only there was only one negative response, which I find pretty remarkable. I read that negative response it from the staff report and it was basically you're not in my backyard complaints, which is what we generally get to these to these short term rentals. I've been on this short term rental rental regulation scheme since it started and it did start to prioritize housing in Boulder County. So you know, the not in my backyard complaints have been, I think, have been very well accommodated by the comprehensive land review process and the licensing process. So I would encourage planning commissioners not to take, give too much weight to those types of complaints. My last note is in the staff report in condition seven, there's a reference to Caribou, the Caribou Road right of way. And I'm not sure if there is a Caribou Road up there by in the Wild Basin. So I'm wondering if staff just imported that verbiage from another staff report. I know there's a Caribou Road in Nederland that just went through the short term rental process. That's all I have, commissioners. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anna, do we have anyone else who has volunteered to speak or has Mr. Yagi come online?
This is Anna Milner staff. I do not see that Mr. Yagi is present and I believe that's everyone that we have in addition to applicants. So we're good to go.
So I will close the public comment period and.
I do also want to let Ian know on that original slide, you had our address as Country Road eighty four west and it's County Road. So I don't know if that matters in the documentation or not, but that's something we caught on our end. So I just wanted to, I mean, simple mistake, just clarify it.
Okay, thank you, Miss Jacobs. We will close public comment. And we will check in with staff. Do you have any responses to the applicant comments or to public comments?
Yeah, I do just have a couple of responses. One is I am now just reading that Caribou Road reference that is a typo. So thank you very much for catching that and helping us get that right. We'll make sure that's addressed before this goes to the commissioners.
And Ian, sorry, could you introduce yourself again for the record since we've got people calling in that won't see who you are?
Absolutely. Thanks, Kim. Yep. So I'm Ian Brighton, Planner Two at Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting. So yes, we will address those as well as the County Road typo as well. So thank you for that. I did want to address the one negative response was actually an adjacent neighbor and that has since revised her comment to be in support of the proposal due to the fact that the applicants outreach directly to her and talked through her concerns, which I think is admirable and how we like to see things happen in our community. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into discussion. Does anybody have any discussion?
And this is Eric Rogers, Assistant County Attorney. Just a reminder to let the applicant respond to the public comments if they so choose.
Oh, thank you. Do the applicants have any responses to public comments?
Nope, no response at this time. This is Callan Jacobs, sorry.
Okay, so now we will move into discussion. Any commissioners have any discussion?
This is Commissioner Shu. I'm going to support the recommendation. It's good to see the applicant working to revise the plan after feedback and working with staff.
Thank you. Any other comments or motion?
Commissioner McMillan, just support the application. Believe it meets all the criteria for approval and I'm ready to make a motion. If my fellow commissioners don't have any further discussion, I can do that. I'll give you a second to think about it.
I'm not, I'm not seeing any other discussion.
Okay. I move that the planning commission recommend additionally approved docket SU twenty two dash zero 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 one, the Jacobs Vacation Rental with the fifteen conditions of approval in the staff report.
This is Commissioner Shu. I'll second that motion.
For that, so we'll take a roll call vote. Mark Bloomfield, I, Sam Fitch. Sam, can you hear us?
You're muted.
We can't hear you. Okay, we'll see. We see your eye. Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
David Chu.
Hi.
Connor Kennedy.
Hi.
Chris Whitney.
Hi.
And we should go now.
Hi.
Okay, it passes now. Moving on to the next item, we will have a public hearing for docket SU dash one seven dash zero 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 six, the Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch with Summer Frederick, Staff Member, relenting. If you could go ahead and start, Summer.
Thank you, commissioners. You could let me know that you see the screen?
Yes.
Great. I am Summer Frederick with the Community Planning and Permitting Staff and this is docket SU seventeen zero 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 six Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch, which is located at one five seven four seven State Highway seven. For the project overview, the applicant is Heather Clark on behalf of the owner, which is Rocky Mountain Pathways Incorporated. Again, this is at one five seven four seven State Highway seven, which is also peak to peak highway. The zoning for this parcel is forestry and the revised application that is in front of you today for consideration is a special review request to expand the existing resort lodge guest ranch use to allow for construction of an indoor horse barn, excuse me, a hay storage barn and four duplex cabins, the remodel in addition to the main lodge and recreational center and an increase in occupancy to eighty students and forty staff during the day and eighty students and eight staff overnight as well as the potential rental of cabins to the public during the summer months. So to give some context, this is the vicinity map with the subject parcel outlined with the red dashed line. You can see it's on the north side of Peak to Peak Highway here, almost directly across from the Fern Cliff location. And zooming in again, the subject parcel is outlined in the dashed red line. Here's an aerial map of the larger area and a zoomed in aerial of the parcel, the subject parcel. You can see the majority of the existing development is clustered here in the southern portion of the parcel. This is the comprehensive plan map and as you can see, there's a lot going on on this parcel. Everything from the N L N A buffer, critical wildlife habitats, environmental conservation area, riparian areas, wetlands, significant natural communities, riparian habitat connections. The majority of the parcel is covered with very high biodiversity significant area. There are again the natural landmarks and natural areas as well as the peak to peak scenic corridor. And I will point out that this is State Highway seven right here and that is the peak to peak corridor. And this section that is immediately to the south of the subject parcel does have a view protection corridor score of five, which is the highest end of that range. So for the public lands map, directly to the north is the US Forest Service land. There is an inholding of fee owned county open space in that Forest Service land. A little bit of history about the parcel. There was a special review application made in nineteen ninety four and that was a request to recognize the existing resort lodge and guest ranch that was on the parcel and to expand it by adding a specific amount of square footage to various different structures as well as create new structures. The resolution associated with that application did approve it with conditions and the conditions were that the property owner obtain all state and county health permits, that defensible space was created around the structures and just I will note this is the condition of approval that was focused on wildfire mitigation before we had wildfire mitigation as part of our land use code. There were also a condition of approval to remove and dispose of manure according to state and county regs and that the maximum number of guests and staff on site were fifty seven guests, guests and twenty staff. There was also an associated development agreement that was recorded for that review and approval. This development agreement recognized specific structures that existed on site along with their dimensions or square footage. Excuse me, it also spelled out the requirements, again, the maximum of fifty seven guests and twenty staff on site. It allowed for, it gave specifics for what was allowed for related to the signage for the parcel and also required that adequate parking was established and that a diagram showing that parking would be submitted. So this is a little bit of a busy site plan, but this is the site plan that is associated with that recorded development agreement. And as you can see here, the various different structures that were existing are recognized as well as the areas that were approved for expansion and the cross hatched areas associated with this cabin with, this is staff parking right here with, so the cross hatch area with the recreation center as well as this new barn and tack shed, those were the approved areas for new development. So the current special use review application that is in front of you is proposing new square footage. And here you see that square footage listed out shown on this site plan that was submitted with application materials. Those structures outlined in light blue are existing and you can see these are the four cabins. This is a round pen, the existing horse barn, outdoor volleyball court and then the pool and pool building and there's a hot tub here as well. And then the structures outlined in this gold yellow color are those that are proposed to have additions. And that is the main lodge, which is this larger square and then the recreation center, which is this rectangle in the middle of the site plan. And then the structures outlined in red are the proposed new structures and that includes a horse barn here, a hay barn here, south of the existing barn and then four new duplex cabins up here along what is essentially a ridge on the parcel. So these are elevations that were submitted with application materials showing what is proposed for the various different structures. This is the north elevation of the lodge. This is the south elevation and what you see outlined in red is new construction with what is shown in blue to be existing. This is the main lodge from the east and west. So this is the elevations for the recreation center. This is the northern elevation, the southern elevation. So this is what is the southern elevations are what face out to Peak to Peak Highway and the view west, southwest ish across to the other side of this valley. This is the eastern elevation and then the western elevation. And then these are the elevations for the proposed duplexes. And all four are proposed to be of the same size and the same design. Again, they are, the proposal is to increase the number of guests, which are referred to as students and staff on site. They are also proposing to increase the capacity. So the events that are happening on site. So what you see here in green is the current capacity, the current events that happen on site and in blue is what they are proposing. And so you can see that the newly proposed events and camps are for the months of June through November. And these are how those events are defined by the applicant. Student camps range in duration from five to eleven days with approximately eighty percent of scheduled camps being eleven days long. Retreats or events range in duration from one to five days and a typical retreat is described as a three day teacher retreat. So referral responses, the access and engineering group did confirm that that this parcel does have legal access and that any proposed driveway, new driveways must meet the multimodal transportation standards. It was also noted in their referral response that during a site visit by staff, the existing driveway, while it met multimodal transportation standards, was in a little bit iffy repair. So they strongly recommended that the driveway be repaired in terms of resurfacing and filling in of potholes or ruts. The Parks and Open Space Natural Resource Planner highlighted and identified all of the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan designations that were shown previously on the map and also raised some concerns. And those concerns can be summarized in the expanding of development into new areas and that is essentially the four proposed. and that is essentially the four proposed cabins up on the top of the ridge, the almost doubling of human activity, the massing and window reflection of the main lodge expansion that is proposed, and the existing and likely expanding use in the riparian corridor. I will note that through conversations with the applicant, as well as recommended conditions of approval, the natural resource planners' concerns have been addressed. So Public Health noted that the maximum approved right now is seventy-seven people and that the onsite wastewater treatment system function at less than two thousand gallon per day capacity. They noted that this proposal will require a state site approval and that documentation of that approval is required prior to a building permit being issued for any of the structures that are proposed through this site. There was also a question as to whether or not a change in license was needed because of the additional people that are proposed to be onsite. The Building Division gave a relatively standard response, saying that building permits are needed and that accessibility requirements will be needed throughout. The wildfire team noted that wildfire mitigation is required and also noted that both the thirty-foot defensible space, as well as the hundred-foot requirement from property lines can be met and seems to be met through the proposed site plan. Staff did receive two phone calls from adjacent property owners, and both phone calls were asking for more information, clarifying information about the proposal, and also made comments about the amount of windows that were proposed, both on the main lodge and the recreation center. We did receive responses of no conflict, excuse me, from the Boulder County Historic Staff, from the Conservation District Excel, and the Town of Estes Park Utilities. Getting into the criteria review, those criteria that are in Article four dash six zero one. Criteria number one is that the use will comply with the minimum zoning requirements. A resort guest lodge conference center is allowed through this process, the special use review process in the forestry zone. The use was recognized previously through SU ninety-four dash one. And the amount of proposed development is allowed with the purchase of TDCs per the additional provisions that we'll review later in this presentation that are found in Article four dash six zero two. Criteria number two, essentially the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. Staff believes that the use is compatible. It was established prior to the original approval in nineteen ninety-four. The Allen's Park area is known for recreational and camp use. There is another camp similar to this one that is run by, it's a Presbyterian camp that is directly across State Highway seven. And then farther up north on Peak to Peak Highway is the Meeker Park Lodge Historic District that also has some similar uses in it. The expansion of the existing structures does not add significantly to the height or the mass of those structures as they are presented to the Peak to Peak Highway or to neighboring parcels. The new structures are similar to existing ag structures in the area. There are some parcels in the area that do have large agricultural barns on them, and there are a significant number of parcels that have just sort of, excuse me, ran a regularly sized and operated agricultural structures. And then the majority of the proposed development is clustered within the existing development area. However, there were a few things that staff had some concerns with. The proposed location of those four duplexes up at the top on the ridge. Again, the windows that create reflection and lantern effect to the surrounding area. And then the additional guests and staff and expanded activities do have the potential to increase traffic and overall use. And I will note that we had, that staff has recommended conditions of approval to mitigate the above concerns. One recommended condition of approval is that those four duplexes be relocated farther to the south and in the general area of the other existing development. And you can see that here. So again, here circled in red is the current proposed location, and staff has recommended a condition of approval that the duplexes be moved closer to this existing area. I will also note that you see these blue Xs crossing out duplexes here. The original proposal was for six duplexes, and because of the square footage restrictions that are required by code, the applicant is only now proposing four. And so on the site plan, they Xed these two out, and they have, through conversations, they have recognized that these are two locations that could be used for the proposed duplexes and that there are other areas throughout the existing development, to the existing developed area that other duplexes might be located in. So another recommended condition of approval is a reduction in the amount of glazing on various facades for both the main lodge and the recreation center. These dark black areas, and this is just a proposal to give the idea of what staff is thinking a reduction might look like. These blacked out areas are what we would think of as a potential for windows that may be removed from the proposal so that the reduction in glazing can happen. And this is the Recreation Center, and similarly, these black areas are what staff would consider a reduction in glazing. And then again, on the west facade, another example of what we would consider as appropriate reduction in glazing. Staff has also recommended a condition of approval requiring windows that are low transmittance, as well as low reflectivity glass be used for these structures. So moving through the criteria review, number three, it will be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The recommended clustering of proposed development allows for the established use to grow while keeping away from the identified environmental features and resources, as well as the reducing the area of site disturbance. And so staff does find that with the recommended conditions of approval, this criteria can be met. The use will support a multimodal transportation system. Again, traffic increase, potential increase in traffic was raised as a potential concern by staff. However, the applicant did state that almost all the guests arrive by shuttles that are owned by Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch. And if additional shuttles are needed, that they contract with the Estes Park Shuttle Service to bring guests to and from the subject property. And so staff has recommended a condition of approval requiring that this be part of the transportation plan for the site in order to ensure that this practice continues with the expansion of the onsite occupancy. Number nine, the use will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts of the use. Again, recommended conditions of approval requiring the reduction in glazing and use of specific windows are intended to mitigate the visual impacts, as well as a tree preservation plan is also recommended as a condition of approval, and that is also intended to mitigate visual impacts. Number eleven, that the use will create an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental, and societal needs by minimizing conception of resources. So it will allow the continuation of the established use that has been a fixture in the Allen's Park area. The clustering will minimize site disturbance. The shuttle will reduce the vehicle miles traveled by the guests. And again, it does provide employment for the area. So getting into the additional provisions that are found in Article four dash six zero two C two. This chart, the parcel is approximately sixty-two acres, which is important in determining the baseline for the maximum square footage that is allowed onsite. So according to this chart, parcels of thirty-five acres are larger, are allowed thirty thousand square feet, and for each additional thirty-five acres, additional square footage is allowed. Because this is a sixty-two square foot, I'm sorry, sixty-two acre parcel, the thirty thousand square feet is the maximum that they are permitted through this provision because they don't have an extra thirty-five acres above the first thirty-five acres. That wasn't too confusing. However, four dash six zero two C three does allow for additional square footage through various different provisions. For parcels thirty-five acres or greater, up to thirty-five thousand square feet is permitted. And they are proposing a maximum of thirty-five thousand square feet. The expansion is required to be offset by the purchase of TDCs for each five hundred square feet of new floor area above that thirty thousand square feet, up to thirty-five thousand square feet. So if they, right now, they have approximately nineteen thousand square feet, so they can build up to thirty thousand square feet without purchasing TDCs. And then the additional five thousand square feet would require TDCs be purchased and submitted with building permits if this application is approved by the Board of County Commissioners. There are also additional provisions that need to be met in order to allow for up to thirty-five thousand square feet. And those are that the land use impacts resulting in the development be offset. And the four that need to be offset are an increase in traffic. And again, staff has recommended a condition of approval requiring the shuttle service in order to offset, excuse me, and reduce the amount of increased traffic that may happen. An increase in water and energy usage. There is an existing ground mounted solar array that serves the site. They also increased their water cistern, which helps them regulate the amount of water they use at various different times. And are, the Boulder County Building Code does have requirements for energy efficient construction. Increase in visual impacts, again, the offset is the recommended conditions of approval to cluster the new development with the existing development. The reduction in glazing and the tree preservation plan. And then staff does not anticipate that this is going to, that this proposal would increase noise on a substantial level. So that one is not anticipated to be needed to be offset. So for the reasons summarized in this presentation and detailed in the staff recommendation packet, Community Planning and Permitting Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of docket SU seventeen zero 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 six Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch, subject to the recommended conditions of approval found in the staff recommendation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Summer. Do we have any questions for Summer?
This is Commissioner Gargano, I do. So I'm trying to understand more about the reduction in glazing and the, how we believe that decreases the visual impact.
Sure. Let me flip back, so.
About more building materials, right? I think about the siding having more of a visual impact than the windows.
Okay, so, let's look at, so essentially, so you can see here, so as I said, the southern facade is the one that kind of faces out, I would say, from the site. And so this is what it would look like when you're looking on face on. And so staff's concern is that these are a lot of windows, and those windows are going to reflect during the day at various different times, as well as at night. They will allow light to, you know, sort of the lantern or lighthouse effect, that all of these windows would be lit up if there was an event happening inside in various different places. So that's why staff wants to reduce the amount of glazing on these facades so that it's not quite such a bright beacon on this slope. Now, getting to the bulk and mass, you can see a little bit here. The addition, while it moves out, it doesn't significantly expand the width of the structure. So again, that facade that's facing out will expand out more than up or side to side. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just, yeah, I think the other question too, just when we talked about getting reduced glare windows, right? Like having a requirement of the types of windows. Just what other, you know, if there are other options there, and obviously, like, we don't want to get too prescriptive, but.
So, again, I don't know if you remember the previous elevation that I just showed, but what you can see here that I've created these black areas, those were all proposed to be windows.
Right.
And so staff is recommending a glazing and kind of a breaking up of the windows along these facades. And then the remaining windows would have low reflective and low transmittance glass.
Yeah.
So the idea is.
I was thinking during the day, during the day, that feels like a lot of building. Where like the windows didn't feel that way, but again, it's a rendering, so it could just be my brain. So I'm just trying to reconcile that.
Summer, this is Commissioner Greenfield, if I can just kind of tag on to, I had a very similar question. How do you determine, like, looking at this, how do you determine what to change from window to siding? Or whatever they're going to do? And sort of how do you evaluate somewhat qualitatively the amount of window reduction versus having anti-reflective coatings and that sort of thing?
Sure, so, you know, the proposed materials are to match what are already there. Or, and so it's the majority of structures that are out there are wood, dark wood, and dark roofs, sort of what you would expect to be in a mountain area. As I said, while I was presenting, this is staff's suggestion. The condition of approval is that there is a reduction. And the idea is that that would be a conversation that would happen between staff and the applicant if this goes through and is finally approved by the Board of County Commissioners. As staff, what we are looking for here is not only a reduction of the amount of windows, but I don't know if I want to say more, but also a breaking up of the windows. So it's less of just an entire wall of windows that may turn into, you know, an entire wall of a mirror that is reflecting when the sun hits it, or an entire wall of light that is being shown out at night. So we don't necessarily get to a very prescriptive, we would like X number of windows removed, or, you know, that you need X. Sometimes we talk about percentages, but even then, we tend to stay away from that. It's more about breaking up those walls of windows and just kind of cutting out, cutting down on the number of windows so that it's not so prominent, either in the night landscape or as a reflection.
That helps me a lot, yeah.
So, so, sorry.
Well, I was just, yeah, my follow-up was just the wording is, the wording that we have right now for this condition. You feel like it will get you to that conversation and get you to a place where that you can both agree on?
So we have had some conversations with the applicant, and they're aware of this. And I think you can speak to them as well, but I believe that it is. So the condition of approval reads, prior to submission of building permits, new elevations for the main lodge and recreation center shall be submitted, showing a significant reduction in glazing. So the idea is that will be submitted, you know, before the building permit is applied for so that staff and the applicant can come to an agreement on what they will be finally submitting for their building permit.
Okay, yeah, and maybe when we get to discussion, we can talk about the word significant reduction and how we, because to your point, percentages aren't great, but significant is a word that anybody can interpret differently, and I don't know. Think on that somewhere.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. Is there, can you remind me when, when a lighting plan would come in? I'm wondering, I'm guessing because it's an event center, it's not going to make sense to have a like eight P M. All of these lights go out. But I'm wondering when a light plan would come in and if that could help mitigate some of this.
So, so typically, for the most part, lighting plans are associated with exterior lights. So, and, and that's where are they located? What do they look like? What are the hours of operation that the exterior lights are used? We have not, not frequently, but we have in the past required various different other mitigation measures related to interior lighting and those have been there. I think I can remember one, maybe two applications where we required that all lights be shut off at some time. We've also required interior light blocking systems go into place, essentially large, heavy curtains, whether they're, you know, mechanical curtains, cloth curtains, whatever, that can be pulled to completely block out the light. In this case, because of the way that the, the site functions, I don't think the lights, interior lights are going to be on to very late hours or on any kind of relative frequency. The majority of their site usage is during the summer months when it stays light later anyway. So I'm, I don't think staff. I will say that I, I didn't think in the analysis that that was, that going that, that far was necessary for the recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you. Other commissioners' questions?
This is Commissioner Shu. Can you go to the topographical map with the duplexes, like the, I mean, the overall site plan? Yeah, that's fine. So I guess I, I don't really understand the topography that well. I see a ridge where the, the four new duplexes are proposed, but then there, there's one that looks like it's on the ridge and then three that look like it's on flat land next to the ridge. Is that right? Or what is the visual impact of that?
Yeah, and I apologize. This is, I should have included an overall contour map for this site. This is not a great representation. The contours, it does, because it's white, doesn't mean that the contours aren't there. It's just that the contours weren't shown on that section of the parcel. So it's still, so you can see this kind of hatched line right here. This is an existing two-track that runs up to the top and then kind of circles around to other development. And actually, maybe if we go back to. Here we go. So you can see this is the existing two-track. And then this is the general area where those four duplexes were proposed. And so this is a significant slope down to the south here. So this runs, this is also sloping up, just not quite as, you can see that there's an existing drainage that runs through here. So the existing two-track runs sort of cut into this hillside along and then up here at the ridge. So this slopes to the south. This slopes to the north into this drainage here. And this area is higher than the existing development area. The site overall does slope from north to south. So where the existing development is right now is the, I would say relatively flattest area. It's not really a, you know, completely flat, but it does slope down here and then this is flatter. And then again, slopes relatively steeply down to the highway.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. And then speaking about languages for criteria, you know, the, the recommendation is that the proposed duplexes would be in locations close to the existing development. Now, what is staff's view of what is close to? You mentioned the two originally, or the two new ones, but then what else is close to?
So, so essentially in, in, you know, this proximity of the existing. So they're proposing the barn here and then the hay shed down here. So there are areas, you know, up in here, the two other ones were proposed to kind of continue the line of existing cabins. And so that's, we use that language for the, for the condition of approval because we didn't have specific proposed sites. So the idea is that we're recommending that to reduce site disturbance as much as possible or to mitigate it. And so that would be the standard that we were overlay when we're looking at where the applicant might propose to move those duplexes.
Okay, thank you.
Summer, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. Can you just tell me what the, the development at the end of that two-track is?
Up here?
Yeah.
That's, and, and that's an open hay storage structure. So it's essentially a roof on top of, it's like a really big carport.
Other commissioners have any questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Canada. I just wanted to clarify occupancy numbers. And I apologize if I missed this somewhere in the presentation or the application materials. But my understanding of this application is that they have two use cases, which is student programming and separately events, which was listed as often a teacher retreat type of event. The occupancy numbers for the student events was eighty and forty during the day and eighty and eight staff overnight. Is there any specific language about occupancy limits for the second use, the events, like including retreats?
So staff anticipates, the, the maximum that staff is saying is eighty guests and twenty staff or forty staff. So essentially, what is referred to, and, and that wasn't made very clear and I apologize for that. When it's, it, when it's referred to as eighty students, it really should be eighty guests.
Okay.
Yeah, so a maximum of a hundred and twenty people onsite during the day and then eighty-eight at night.
Regardless of if they're students or adult guests?
Yep.
Okay.
So the occupancy stays the same, whatever the event is.
Great.
Any other questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Shu. I guess following up on that, I was gonna ask the applicant this, but maybe staff can chime in. But there's a distinction between small and large retreats and events. What is the difference there?
So that actually wasn't specified, but you can ask the applicant that. Staff really was just looking at the overall maximum capacity and how they determine what is large and what is small. Wasn't discussed.
Thank you, Summer.
This is Andrew Goldstein, CPP staff. She is being promoted right now.
London's Clark.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Go ahead and give us your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Heather Clark and I am the Director of experiential learning for Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch. It's a pleasure to see you all this afternoon. I did just want to open up with, I want to thank Summer and the team over at Boulder County. They've done a great job and have been really supportive and helpful throughout this entire process as we're all, we're learning together. And as Summer stated, I just wanted to reinstate that we are very willing and, and ready to work with the county on all their conditions of approval. I know that the windows and the, the glare is, is an issue and we want to mitigate that as best we can. So we are going to reduce the windows and work with Summer and her team on what reduction means. Get that special glass in and make sure that we can mitigate that reflection as much as, as needed for, to pull the permits. And also with the duplex cabins, as Summer stated, we're, we're more than willing to move them closer to the existing developed area to mitigate that land use and, and that land disruption. And I know there were other, other stipulations and conditions. And like I said, I've read through them all and we're, we're ready and willing to work with the county on that and, and move forward if, if this application is approved today. And I also wanted to address that question that was asked earlier between a definition of like a small retreat or a large retreat. I don't know if I have a, again, a written definition either, but for an example, we are, you know, in the month of May, we're hosting a small group of teachers, which our definition of small is there's ten teachers coming up for a small retreat. But a bigger retreat would be when we, if we invited our board of directors, which is anywhere from forty to sixty adults coming up. You know, if we could do that in the future. So that's kind of our, I guess, running definition of small and larger, larger groups. We have groups of as small as five and then if approved, we would have, you know, groups as large as eighty. Yeah, does that, again, does anybody else have any questions for me? I didn't prepare a formal presentation because I know that Summer is very in-depth and covered it all. But do you guys have any questions or clarifications on my end?
Commissioners, any questions?
This is Commissioner McMillan. I have one. Just, can you tell me about your transportation plan and allows this? The condition in the staff report, there would be the primary mode of transportation would be shuttles. Is that for everyone coming to the place? Do they come in shuttles? What about staff? How, how many people, cars do you have on site and people traveling to the site every day?
Yeah, we do have the majority, and this is eighty percent or above of, well, our, all of our students, I should say, actually a hundred percent of our students. And eighty percent or above of our adult retreat visitors are coming from out of state. So our RMPR shuttles that we have go pick them up from the Denver Airport and bring them back. And then the shuttles park on site. We have, you know, where they park normally. We have, we also own two staff houses that are about a mile down the road, kind of in both directions from, from the actual ranch. And there are a few folks that have their own cars that they bring in. I would probably say three or four cars. But we do shuttle, they're allowed to take a shuttle home, so they can all carpool in every day as well. And then we have about five staff that are local to the area. So they live, you know, in Lyons or Allen's Park and kind of all over that they drive in. But the majority right now of our business is out of state. We love to do more local stuff, but we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. The probably the most local retreat that we did is we've held a wilderness first responder retreat and we did get a lot of people from local areas or even folks that drove out of state up, but that was about twelve to fifteen people. And I would say we probably had about six cars, the rest of the folks we picked up from the Denver Airport.
Okay. Shuttles would definitely be the primary mode of transportation in that, okay?
Yep, hundred percent. And then we do have, like when other, we use, we either use our RMPR shuttles or we use a lot of Estes Park shuttling too. They, they do great shuttles from the airport when we, when we, you know, can't pick them up or timing's a little bit different.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, hearing none. Summer, do you have any responses?
Thank you. I do not.
We'll go ahead and open it up to public testimony. And I'll go through the procedures once again. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the planning commission homepage beforehand. Once those who signed up in advance have spoken, I will call for any additional members of the public to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address and docket number in the chat box to write. As each person, each person who has joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted. Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you are finished speaking, Zoom will place you back in room as an attendee. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, the system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted, please state your name and address for the record before providing a comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. A timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. A reminder that comments are to be limited to specific docket item being discussed and common courtesy will be observed. Anna, do we have anyone signed up?
Anna Milner staff, we do not, but we do have one person dialed in via phone that has raised their hand to speak. You have now been allowed to talk, so you should be able to speak at will and please identify yourself with name and address. Thank you.
Hi, this is Alona Dottler again, two seven oh five Regis Drive in Boulder and in Allen's Park. I first would like to applaud Summer for doing just a great job. This is a huge project, which I think will, well, I know will have significant impact in Allen's Park. It's located kind of in the middle of Allen's Park, even though it is off the highway. I'm concerned about how the construction will be handled and I haven't really thought about any suggestions yet, but I know it's, it's probably going to be a lot of big trucks going up there. They're going to be taking down trees. I'm wondering if, if going forward, the county might consider some, you know, suggestions or some help to mitigate that impact. I mentioned there's going to be excavation, there's going to be, you know, cement mixers up there. So I'm wondering if the staff might think about that going forward. I'm most concerned about the short-term rentals. And I'm wondering if the hundred and twenty people on property per day includes those short-term rentals. As I read it, there's going to be eight new rental dwellings up there, short-term rentals, which can mean more than two days. So you can have a huge turnover of people going up there, which is going to increase the public impact on this very fragile piece of property based on what staff indicated about the riparian corridors and the water sheds and the forest. So that's, that's a big concern for me. I'd like staff or the applicant to talk about that. How they plan on handling those short-term rentals, including whether or not the short-term rental people are going to arrive there in the shuttles. Because, you know, you have that turnover of eight dwellings every two days and people are driving their cars up there. That's definitely going to increase the number of road trips up to that property. I think it's great that the applicant is shuttling most of the eighty people up there every day or every ten days or whatever. But I'm, you know, I also would like the county commissioners to consider or the planning commissioners to consider the impact of these rental dwellings, which no one has really said anything about. Also, does do those eight new rental dwellings, how do they impact the septic requirements and the increased water use? Both are my questions and my concerns. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Summer. Do we have anyone else that has signed up?
This is Anna Milner staff. I can confirm we have no further members of the public signed up to speak.
Summer, do you have any clarifying comments or responses?
Sure. This is Summer Frederick, CPP staff again. I will say about the construction, we did, we are, there is a recommended condition of approval requiring a tree preservation plan. And the, the intent of that is to try and mitigate the sort of site disturbance that will happen because of the construction and try and keep as many large trees in place so that that breaking up of the, the developed area stays as much as possible as is feasible with the wildfire mitigation plan. In terms of how the construction happens and how many trucks go to and from, it's my understanding that all of this construction won't happen at once. So it's not going to be that the entire site is going to be under construction with a whole lot of disturbance happening all at once. So that might mean that construction happens sporadically over a longer period of time. But I think that, that what that does is reduce the anticipated noise and traffic impacts of the intended construction. And I may let the applicant respond to the short-term rentals question. It's just from staff's perspective, it's my understanding that the rental to the public. Uh, it's just from staff's perspective, it's my understanding that, uh, the rental to the public is not necessarily short-term rental. But more, um, allowing other groups to come in on, on sort of off times. That, um, the property owner is, is not running their, um, the events.
Thank you, Summer. Ms. Clark, do you have any response to?
Thank you, um, this is Heather Clark. Yes, I can, um, to kind of add on to what Summer was saying about the construction first. It will be done in phases. Um, you know, we have, we do have our own like priority list of what we were needing first. And so it, and of course, money is always an issue, so, um, it will be done in phases. All, all the construction won't happen at once. Um, the hay, the hay barn and the horse barn are the first, um, in our book. And then maybe the duplex is next and the lodge renovation next. Um, so it won't be all at once and we will do our best to mitigate noise, um, trucks and, and we get it too. I also wanted to state that since we are a student camp, we also have to follow all of our Colorado, um, the state of Colorado childcare guidelines. So there's a lot that we have to do internally with like allowing construction crews on and all at once. And, and there's, there's actually a whole nother entity that we deal with and, and we were lucky to, and it's for the safety of our students. Um, so that will help maybe mitigate, that won't all happen at once for those reasons too. And that kind of brings me to our next, um, concern of like short-term rentals. Just so everybody is aware, since we are, uh, considered a childcare facility as a camp. We actually, when we have students on property, there can be nobody else. So it's even if the students are only occupying the lodge and there's only, I, you know, forty there or less than that. We cannot have other people in those cabins, so they do stay empty. Um, so that kind of, there won't be, and our main goal and our mission is to run student camps. So we do run those student camps as we can every eleven days. So in a month, if our camps run from like a Tuesday to the following Friday. We have what we call an in-between weekend and we would have two of those in-between weekends a month. If, you know, luckily if we ran two camps a month. Um, so that would be the times where those cabins would be booked out with like a retreat or, you know, various guests. Um, so it'll only be those two in-between weekends a month for those three nights. Um, you know, on, that's ideally what we're needing, um, because we can't, we cannot overlap guests and students, no matter what. Even if it's a teacher retreat and students, unless the teachers belong to the same school as the students, that's a huge no for childcare. So I think that will help with, um, you know, I don't know if there will be that much traffic. As our primary mission is student camps, but I will say, and I think maybe, you know. The past two years have been really rough with COVID and bringing students on trips. Um, so it would be nice as a backup plan to have, you know, that short-term rental and, and to do more retreats. I'm hoping that we're approaching maybe a, a better situation with COVID because our student camps are picking back up and we're up and running again. Um, but ideally our student camps run the whole year and we only have those two in-between weekends for our duplexes to be rented. For retreats or, or short-term rentals, whatever those are. Does that, um, it doesn't even have any other? I apologize if I forgot a question. It doesn't, anybody else have any, anything else?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Clark. And, um, and we'll open it up for discussion. Want us to kick off the discussion?
Uh, I'll take a shot. This is Commissioner McMillan. You know, I think, I think the application meets the criteria for approval, um, with perhaps a couple tweaks that I might suggest or maybe we can discuss. Um, numbers ten and eleven, uh, deal with the, the duplex locations. It's kind of a little bit open as to where we suggest they go and, um. Number eleven deals with the, the glazing that, that Leishen brought up and, um. Might suggest just adding a little detail to both of those to just kind of say, hey, here's what we're looking for or thinking. Or, you know, might, might be acceptable just to provide some guidance. Um, I want to hear what all of you thought about that. And then I would just suggest maybe to the applicant and to staff that before we get to the county commissioner hearing, that maybe there's some suggested alternatives. That are brought forward at that time, so that we kind of take the subjectivity out of it moving forward. And everybody kind of knows, you know, what, what the plan is and what's going to get them to the approvals that they seek. So those are my two areas of concern, otherwise I, I think the application meets, uh, the criteria for approval. And I have a few suggestions on wording, but, um, I can make those after we talk about it a little bit more.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I agree with all that. I don't have much more to say. For once. Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Chu. I also agree and would like to hear Commissioner McMillan's suggestions.
All right, put, put me on the spot. Uh, I'll give it a shot. Um, number, let's start with number eleven. I think that one's a little more straightforward and at least thanks for bringing this topic up. Cause that's something I was thinking about as well, but, um. The condition currently reads, prior to submission of building permits. New elevations for the main lodge and recreation center shall be submitted showing a significant reduction in glazing. Um, I might remove the word significant and just say a reduction in glazing with the intent of reducing both the reflective glare. Um, on highway seven during the daytime and the visibility of the interior lights from the highway during the nighttime. So it's, it's sort of give the reason of why, what we're trying to do by reducing the glazing, but not saying kind of where or how or. And then I think you can really focus on, you know, the view from the highway. And, um, how that's impacted from the changes that you make. And I, I, I will say that I, I agree with the intent and I, I think it's a good thing to pick up on. Uh, I just think a little more kind of, um, you know. Definition of what we're trying to achieve with the reduction would help, you know, help everybody get to, to the answer.
Commissioner Bloomfield, uh, I like that. I'm wondering if we want to add something along the lines of like, you know. A, a new plan that is amenable to staff or something.
We, uh, this is Summer Frederick with CPMP. Um, when we include language like that, it's typically, um, along the lines of prior to submission of building permits. New elevations be submitted to CPMP for review and approval. Is that in line with, with what you're thinking, Commissioner Bloomfield?
No, I like that.
Yeah, and then maybe, but you know, with the intent of.
Yes.
You know, the big areas of blast and.
What Commissioner McMillan said.
Okay, um. Bear with me. So, um, prior to submission of building permits, new elevations for the main lodge and recreation center shall be submitted to CPMP. For review and approval, showing a reduction. In glazing with the intent of reducing both the reflective glare on the highway during the daytime and the visibility of interior lights from highway seven during the nighttime. It is highway seven, right? Am I saying that right? Okay. Um, okay, any other thoughts or discussion on, on that one?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, maybe what would be helpful, sorry, I, I don't really have a good idea for the location. But can you, can you just put up that site plan, uh, for the location of the duplexes?
Sure. Me.
So that we're all looking at the same thing.
This is the one you're thinking of.
Yeah, thanks. Um. So I, I guess my preference or my thought would be like most logical location. Um, in my mind would be kind of extending to the north and west of where the existing right there, where the two, the two X's are. And I don't, I'd like to allow some flexibility for you all to hash this out after you leave the, the meeting today. But, um, you know, I think you could put them, um, you know, in the southeast, right on the access road. But that would be close to campus, but it wouldn't, I think it would be a bad location because it's, you know, so. I don't think that anybody wants to do that, but, um, I think just sort of identifying where we think some, some places that make sense. Um, would be, would be helpful and maybe this is just feedback that we don't need to put into the motion. But my, I think just looking at it to me, where the two cabins are X out seem to be a good spot. Um, for the next phase and I'm open to other ideas, but. I think that would be acceptable, um, for what the, the condition's trying to achieve. Yeah, this is, this is a very helpful map. So that's that kind of. And is that area like significantly elevated such that it would be visible from the highway below? I think that's the other thing, uh, that we're trying to achieve here is to kind of keep it. You know, secluded.
So, uh, Summer Frederick, again, um, this area is elevated, it's, um, set back. And, um, so I'm not sure that this area would be visible from the highway. It might be visible from the other front. There's a neighborhood that is, um, sort of on the other side of the valley that the highway cuts through. Um, so they might be visible from over there. Uh, they probably are. Um, however, I would say that these four are already visible, so it would kind of extend that. Um, and I think, you know, you can see that this area is, um. You know, has, has a two-track running through it and is, um, adjacent to existing parking. So I think if the commissioners are looking to add a little bit more, um, specific language to the condition. Um, you can, um, include language such as relocation to the area. Closer to the development. Um, primarily to the north and west of existing development.
Ms. Commissioner Bloomfield, um. I'm, I'm hesitant to make suggestions by looking at a two, two D representation. Uh, of a, what is, I'm sure, complex terrain. I'm wondering if we can just suggest that the applicant, uh, give, you know, maybe two alternate. Uh, approximate locations for the additional cabins that they bring that to the county commissioners. And that way the county commissioners can say, yeah, we like this one, we don't like that one or we like both of them. Um, and like understand those areas.
So this is Commissioner Fitch. I think we could also do what we did with the previous condition, which is to say to move the. Uh, for duplexes to be closer to the existing. Uh, development in order to minimize site disturbance and to reduce visual impact. From the peak-to-peak highway.
And Sam, if I could add on this, Commissioner Bloomfield, maybe we do the same, you know, per review of some.
Yeah.
And then also thoughts on?
Well, this is Commissioner Chu. I think that the proposed revised language is good. I think in the ideal world, the plans or the ideas would be submitted to the Board of County Commissioners. Just so there's some public review, uh, before, you know, submitting, uh, the building permit applications.
Then Commissioner Chu, just to clarify, when you said the proposed, uh, condition, did you mean proposed by staff or what we've been discussing?
What we've been discussing, I think that's good. Um, you know, I, I know that, uh, you know, maybe there's not enough time or it's hard to come up with alternatives before. Board of County Commissioners, but, you know, I think ideally we'd have some public review, um. Of some proposals beforehand. I think that's in line with what other people have been saying too.
Anyone else have any comments? Or anyone else?
Um, I have, I think rewritten these conditions, so let me give it a shot. Um, I'm moved that the planning commission recommend the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approved docket SU. Twenty-one dash zero 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 eight Boulder County Allen's Park. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. One moment. Too many windows open here. Bear with me, I must have closed this window on accident.
Summer's giving a little help.
Oh, thank you for the help. Um, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of docket SU dash seventeen dash zero 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 six Rocky Mountain Pathways Ranch. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval found in the recommend, in the staff recommendation with the following amendments. To conditions ten and eleven, so condition ten will be revised to read. Prior to submission of building permit applications, a new site plan shall be submitted to CPMP for review and approval. Showing the proposed duplexes and locations close to the existing development in order to minimize site disturbance. And reduce visibility from the peak-to-peak highway. And number eleven amended as follows. Prior to submission of building permits, new elevations will, uh, will be submitted for the main lodge and recreation center. Uh, shall be submitted to CPMP for review and approval, showing a reduction in glazing with the intent of reducing both the reflective glare. Highway seven, peak-to-peak highway during the daytime and the visibility of the interior lights from the peak-to-peak highway during the nighttime. I think that's got it.
This is Commissioner Fitch. I will second the motion.
Hey, we'll do a roll call. Mark, you fill, I, Sam Fitch. I saw you. And a thumbs up. Uh, Gavin McMillan. David Chu.
Hi.
On a candidate.
Hi.
Chris Whitney.
Hi.
And we should go.
Hi.
All right, it passes unanimously and I know we didn't formalize it, but I would still suggest to the applicant bringing a couple of options to county commissioners. Um, so that they can, they can have. All right, thanks, Summer. And thank you to, um, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Okay, we will now open the public hearing for docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 eight. The Boulder County Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station. Uh, we'll now hear from Sam Walker staff. If you would please present your staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, Sam Walker here, CPMP staff. I was the planner assigned to review docket SU twenty-one eight. The Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station. So I will share my screen. Hopefully you'll see that in just a second and we can go ahead and get started. So, did, all right, great, thank you. Uh, so this is again docket SU twenty-one zero zero eight, the Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station Expansion. At one four eight seven five State Highway seven. So this is a vicinity map of the entire parcel where the proposal is located. I'll note that this parcel is, uh, more than five hundred acres in size. Most of it is, uh, or I think all of it is owned by the US Forest Service. But we are particularly concerned with this little, I'm going to call it a pizza slice, uh, right off of State Highway seven. Just outside of Allen's Park. So just to kind of contextualize the map that we're looking at, State Highway seven or peak-to-peak highway is traveling. Uh, the way that my mouse is going right now, the pizza slice is located at the intersection of State Highway seven and County Road eighty-four west. As you can see here, and then the historic townsite of Allen's Park is basically directly south across peak-to-peak highway. So, uh, now we'll go over a brief overview of the project. The owner of the transfer station as it exists currently is Boulder County Public Works, although of course the US Forest Service. Transfer station as it exists currently is Boulder County Public Works, although of course the US Forest Service owns the entirety of the the property that it's located on. And Seth Jacobs is the member for the staff. Of Public Works who's representing the application on behalf of the county. The zoning, I'm sorry, is not agricultural. It is all forestry. And the parcel, like I said, is over five hundred acres in size. However, the portion of the parcel that we're discussing today, the pizza slice is a is, I think, slightly under one acre in size. So there's an existing seventy eight hundred square foot. Waste transfer station on that portion of the parcel. I put a note here that that's the area of disturbance. So that's kind of the area that's encompassed by the. Fencing that's currently up and we'll see that in some of the site photos. So it's a small portion of that one acre that's currently encompassed by the fencing and that's kind of the whole station, although most of it is just a dirt and gravel path. The request is a special use review to expand the footprint of the waste transfer station by eight thousand five hundred thirty seven square feet for a total of about sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. Uh on the one acre portion of the parcel. Um and then there, as part of that expansion, they're going to be adding some improvements to the facility. They're going to be replacing the existing office. One one room office with a new one room office and then a small storage area. They'll be replacing the existing chemical toilet with a ninety six square foot permanent vault toilet. Adding a second trash compactor to the site. And then they've got several other things that will, I think most of them currently exist on the property and will remain there, but just be oriented differently. Including three thirty yard covered roll offs, a fifteen yard wildlife resistant container. That's new and it's for composting. A conex for mattress storage and then some drop off boxes for textiles and things like that. Um and then the other kind of structure that they're proposing is a raised aluminum platform that'll go around some of the. Uh thirty yard roll offs and that's to increase ADA access so that people can get a wheelchair up to the point where they can throw things in. The proposed site disturbance is two hundred cubic yards of fill for the foundational earthwork and then non foundational earthwork for site leveling mostly. Is two hundred and fifty cubic yards of cut and two hundred and thirty cubic yards of fill. Now we'll take a look at a few more maps. This is an aerial map of the transfer site as it exists currently. So this is that transfer site, the existing seventy eight hundred square foot footprint. You can see that there's an access point off of County Road eighty four west right here. And then there's also a second access to State Highway seven, which is a C dot Colorado Department of Transportation right of way. This structure right here is the fire station. It's directly next door. And then the. I'm forgetting the name of it, but if you're familiar with Allen's Park, right off of State Highway seven, they have kind of a a community center and and a community art. Gallery. So that's this building that I'm circling with my mouse just to the right of the fire station. And then, of course, Allen's Park is directly to the south. Now we're looking at a comprehensive plan map, so the comprehensive plan identifies wetlands in the northern portion of the parcel. Portion, I guess we'll call it, then significant natural communities covering the entire area. The other thing I'll note is that the parcel is within the peak to peak scenic corridor, although it's not particularly clear from this map. And then we have the associated view protection score with peak to peak scenic highway, which, as Summer said in the previous presentation, is five here. That's the highest score we have. Uh nearby public land, so we can see, of course, that the subject parcel is owned by the US Forest Service. It's also directly west of Rocky Mountain National Park. There's a county held conservation easement to the northwest and then a small county open space property to the east of the parcel. Now we're looking at a zoning map, so the parcel in question is zone forestry. As I noted earlier, there's also a supplemental setback of fifty five feet from the center line of State Highway seven. Although I don't think that supplemental setback is really posing an issue for this application, but I did want to note that it exists. So now we'll look at some of the actual documentation that was provided for the application. So this is a aerial photo where the applicants have overlaid. The proposed expansion on top of the existing ones. So the existing seventy eight hundred square foot footprint. Is outlined by that fencing that I've kind of mentioned a few times now, and that's shown in red with the two entries to. The transfer station shown with these uh small, I guess, M shapes, one to County Road eighty four west and one that. Spits out on to State Highway seven. The green dotted line is the proposed expansion of the footprint of the facility. I will note this is probably going to change slightly. As you can see here, they've noted uh the setback line on to the east. And the corner of that. Expansion goes into the setback line. They want to put fencing around that. Uh the fencing will be ten feet tall, which means it has to meet setbacks and requires a building permit. And they can't build it within that setback. So the plans will change slightly and that's one of the conditions that we've recommended for approval is that they. Uh submit revised plans for permitting showing that the fence will abide by the setback and will also be issued building permits. Now we're looking at a site plan for the proposed expansion. So this just kind of generalizes what they're, what they want to do, which is expand the footprint and then. Rearrange some of the existing stuff as well as add new facilities within the uh footprint of the transfer station. Over on the right, we just have a slightly more zoomed in view of the same site plan. And then this slide, we've got it oriented a little bit more directly, so it's easier to read. And this one is labeled with all the different things that they're proposing. The Public Works Department is proposing to put on the site. So. In the kind of northernmost corner, so remember north is kind of angled in this case, so north is a kind of in this direction over here. In the northernmost corner, we have the uh proposed office replacement. So this again will replace the existing one story office. And then the vault restroom in the corner as well. We have the uh some of the roll offs here, more roll offs over here. You can see this kind of E shape. That's the raised aluminum platform that will improve ADA access and then the ramp going up to it. We also have a parking area that allows for an ADA van, which will be added. And then we have the textile uh drop bins and staging area for things that are difficult to recycle. This slide shows the elevations for the proposed office structure. It also includes the resident or excuse, not the residents, the restroom. Uh it also includes the restroom in the top one. They're showing solar panels on the roof, which is something that we allow through a building permit, so it's not really part of the review, but I just wanted to note that uh they are providing some power to it. And then we have a kind of floor plan of that office and storage area as well as the vault restroom, which also has a storage area. This is, this slide shows elevations of that vault restroom. This is the drainage plan that was submitted by the applicants. This is also kind of where we'll take a brief look at some of the proposed vegetative screening. So they've proposed to plant some trees along the eastern boundary of the expanded footprint. And then they're changing some of the contours around the site because it does slope kind of away from peak to peak. And so they need to level the site as they expand it. And then we also have a clip of the narrative that was submitted uh describing the earthwork. Now I'll take a look at a couple of site photos. I've also included a map in the top left corner with an arrow to try to orient you a little bit better because it's a little bit difficult uh to do that. So in this first photo, we're looking mostly north and a little bit east toward the existing office building and the chemical toilet, which will be replaced. This is also the area where the new office and the vault toilet will be, although their positions will kind of be switched, if you can imagine that. In this photo, we're looking almost directly south, so we can see the uh compactor and two of the recycling areas and. One of the roll offs and things like that. So these things will all be kind of rearranged within the footprint as it's expanded. And then in the background, we can see some of that existing vegetation. Most of this is probably going to go away because the footprint will be expanded in that direction. So that's why we're asking for some additional vegetative screening. Once the footprint is expanded, here we are looking almost directly west um. Across the parcel, so the vault toilet and the, or excuse me, the the chemical toilet and the existing office are behind. This photo, obviously, this is me. This is taken by a coworker, so I can't say it's behind me in this picture. Uh but you can see another one of the roll offs and then peak to peak is just barely visible in the background. You can see the stop sign at the intersection of peak to peak and County Road eighty four west. This photo is the entrance to the transfer station from County Road eighty four west. This dump truck is on uh State Highway seven or on peak to peak highway. You can see the large gate and that ten foot fencing that I've discussed a few times now. This photo is from peak to peak facing directly east into uh or toward the waste transfer station. So you can see the entry from. County Road eighty four west, just out of frame to the left. And then we can see we've got some vegetative screening, but again, most of this will go away when the uh footprint of the station is expanded. This photo, we're facing north across it from outside. So this is, we're kind of standing in the area where we're getting into the C dot right of way. And the second entryway to the station is visible right here. You can see the gate in this case was closed. There's also a very large ponderosa pine that was mentioned in the referral comments from. Uh the Boulder County Parks and Open Space. They were asking that we try to preserve it. Um I that wasn't recommended as part of the staff conditions, but I think the applicants are kind of maybe trying to preserve it anyway. Um so we'll maybe hear from them in a few minutes. This photo we're facing north, so we see Mount Meeker in the background across the uh transfer station again. And this photo is of the fire station on the adjacent property directly uh kind of south and east. This is the view facing directly east from outside of the transfer station. So County Road eighty four west is just off to the left here, so this is just adjacent property. And then this photo is facing southwest across the transfer station. Uh again, showing kind of the area where it will be expanded toward the vantage point of this photo. So referral responses, um the building team gave us mostly standard. Comments that some of the structures would need permitting and the grading would need permitting as well. They'll need to meet accessibility requirements, which again is kind of the purpose or one of the purposes of this facility expansion. And that all of the structures would need to be constructed with ignition resistant materials. The Parks and Open Space referral response had quite a few concerns with impacts to the view protection quarter associated with uh peak to peak or with State Highway seven. Uh noted that they did not at all support the ten foot fence that's proposed to be expanded. It currently exists on the property, but they want to expand it along with the footprint to match the new footprint. Uh and requested more trees and vegetation for screening. They noted, the Parks and Open Space response noted that there was no, not really any screening provided on the south or the north. Areas of the expanded footprint. They were only really showing trees along the western portion that separates it directly from peak to peak. But that that wasn't really going to cut it in terms of. Actually screening the the expansion from view. And then, of course, like I mentioned, requested the preservation of that large ponderosa pine that was in one of the site photos. Um and then there were some concerns, the original site or the site plan that was submitted showed a uh future. Wind turbine, um and there was some confusion about that. So there was a supplemental. Uh narrative submitted by the applicant after we kind of asked them about it, stating that that was just kind of a placeholder. They're not actually proposing to construct that as part of this application. The county's access and engineering team noted that legal access to the property is demonstrated via adjacency both to County Road eighty four west and uh State Highway seven. Didn't have any concerns with the expansion posing a significant increase in trip generation to and from the parcel or to and from the site. And that a uh access permit would be required for from both C dot for State Highway seven and from uh the county for County Road eighty four west. Um Public Health Department noted that a permit was going to be required for the vaulted restroom. And made some recommendations regarding the treatment of industrial stormwater. Uh the wildfire mitigation team, of course, noted that wildfire mitigation would be required as part of the expansion. And then the Boulder Valley Longmont Conservation District's, their referral response noted that the kind of original proposal for this waste transfer station, which happened back in the early eighties. Uh there were quite a bit of concerns at the time from members of the public regarding visual impacts of the transfer station and that those uh concerns still exist today. Uh and recommended some vegetative screening to kind of counteract that. Then Rocky Mountain National Park also recommended additional landscaping. Recommended putting up sound barriers and earth burns to try to mitigate some of the noise that might come from within the transfer station. Uh made a note of the wind turbine, which again is not really included in the application and then recommended some BMPs and best practices for. Wildlife or for avoiding issues with wildlife in the station. Public comments, we sent out two hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty two notifications. Two public comments were received by staff prior to issuance of the staff recommendation, which happened last week. And then since the issuance of the staff recommendation, I got three comments, which the all of you commissioners should have been forwarded within the last day or so. Uh those, one of the comments expressed kind of general support for the application, just kind of said it looked good essentially in that it was needed. And then the other four comments that we received. Were in opposition. They noted a variety of concerns that I've listed here. I'm not going to summarize them in the interest of time, but if we need to come back to this slide, we of course can't. So now I've included a few of the criteria that I felt were maybe more relevant to the discussion or that we tied more of our condition, recommended conditions to. So the first is that the proposed use will comply with the minimum requirements of the zoning district in the code. So this use is allowed through the special use review process uh in the forestry zoning district where the parcel is located. Um uh one of the requirements for waste transfer stations in the code is that they be issued all. Excuse me, they be issued all applicable local, state and federal permits. So we have a recommended condition of approval to reflect that. And then what I mentioned earlier regarding the expansion of the fence. So I had a discussion with the applicant regarding the fence and this was kind of addressed in their supplemental narrative as well. But the the idea of the ten foot fence is that it actually helps them out uh in terms of keeping trash on the site. Of course, this is off peak to peak highway up in the hills or up in the mountains, so it's very windy. The ten foot fence is better at preventing things from being blown off the property. But it doesn't get a lot of wind load on its own because it's chain linked, so the wind can pass through it, but trash can't. Um so we're recommending that they be allowed to have that ten foot fence. But that the ten foot fence be shown on the revised site plans at permitting that it meets setbacks because, like I pointed out earlier, it didn't meet setbacks in the original. Uh site plan that was submitted for the application. Next criteria that I've included is standard two, which is the use compatibility. So we want to make sure that the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding area. Uh the uses existing, it's existed basically in this form, in its current form on this parcel since nineteen eighty five, when it was originally uh permitted to have the trash compactor installed. That was addressed a little bit in the staff recommendation and I even managed to find an old file photo where it looks exactly like it does today. Um the use will or is adjacent to and serves residents of the Allen's Park townsite. It's located near a variety of uses. I've included residential institutional, which is my shorthand way of saying like government uses, like there's the post office, there's the fire station and the old gallery. Thank you, Summer, for messaging that to me. And uh and then commercial uses, all of those are kind of located within or immediately nearby the Allen's Park townsite and this area of the subject parcel. The proposed expansion will allow the station to better serve the residents that are in the area by increasing the ADA facilities and accessibility of the property. And then also improving the sanitary facilities on the site. And then. This is also, I feel or we feel as staff that it will be compatible because it utilizes an existing disturbed area rather than proposing. A waste transfer site on a currently undeveloped site somewhere else. Standard four tries to make sure that the use will not result in an over intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. So. This one I felt was relevant because the proposed expansion is nearly doubling the amount of space that the transfer station takes up. We're going from roughly seven hundred seventy eight hundred square feet to more than sixteen thousand square feet of kind of disturbed area. Uh or enclosed area within that ten foot fence. However, the parcel where it's located is obviously more than five hundred acres in size. The specific portion of this parcel. Where the waste transfer station is located is about an acre in size. An acre is roughly forty three hundred square feet, so we're still not really beyond about a third of that area. Um and most of the area that will be disturbed as part of this expansion will remain permeable surface. They are proposing to install some concrete pads. Underneath some of the roll aways and the trash compactors, but the vast majority of it will still be dirt and gravel like it is today. But in order to make sure that we don't have any issues with runoff or sedimentation during or after construction, we are recommending. Uh conditions of approval that require a pretty substantial revegetation and erosion control measures. The revegetation will happen after construction. Erosion control will be put up during and maintained throughout the construction process. Finally, I have, of course, have included criteria nine, which addresses the visual impacts or potential visual impacts of the proposed use or the proposed expansion of the existing use. So in this case, like we've kind of talked about, there were a variety of concerns regarding visual impacts from. Members of staff, members uh or our referral agencies and also members of the public, including the visual. Including the visual impacts of the ten foot fence and kind of increasing the, the amount of area that it covers. The lack of vegetative screening or the inadequacy of the proposed vegetative screening. And then, of course, the view protection score along State Highway seven. And so to kind of try to mitigate those visual impacts. Staff are recommending a condition of approval requiring a revised vegetative screening plan that includes increased or higher levels of vegetative screening along the western boundary of the expanded footprint. That was something that was pulled out of the Boulder County Parks and Open Space referral responses, including shrubs or something like that to continue the screening, not just trees. And then also providing screening along the north and south areas of the expanded footprint in order to mitigate the visual impacts to people driving to and from north to south on peak to peak highway. We're also recommending a condition of approval requiring the submittal of a lighting plan. My understanding is currently that the hours of operation are pretty limited to daytime, but they will have some exterior lighting on the site for the restroom and office. And so we want to make sure that those, whatever lighting is there is pretty minimal. There's not a whole lot of it and that it of course meets our downlit and dark sky requirements. So that being said, county staff is recommending conditional approval of docket SU twenty-one zero zero eight, the Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station Expansion, and also recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this docket to the Board of County Commissioners. I also have the full text of the recommended conditions of approval on the following two sides. If we need to take a look at them, other than that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Sam. Do commissioners have questions for Sam?
Commissioner, ready? I have one question. On the existing site plan, there's a chain link fence and then on the, on the changes, there's also a chain of fences. The would the proposed chain link fence also just be a plain chain link fence with no privacy slots or any other screening?
That's my understanding. Yes, that was something that we discussed internally as staff was potentially requiring them to put up the privacy slots or some kind of netting or something like that to try to shield the interior from the exterior. But that's why I mentioned the, the wind loading on the fences that this is a windy site. And so if it's just chain link, the wind can pass through very easily, but as we start adding more material to the front of it. It increases the wind load on the fence and could cause it to fall over or something like that. So there's no proposal for that, and that wasn't a recommended condition of approval, but it was discussed at least internally.
Thank you.
This Commissioner Bloomfield, I'm curious about, yeah, definitely the, the screening seems to be a big, a big piece of this. Does county step not usually recommend things like burns? I saw that as a recommendation from Rocky Mountain National Park. And it seems like that might be a good option here to, to kind of how to blend in.
So typically we don't recommend berms kind of for a variety of reasons. They tend to dramatically increase site disturbance. The dirt has to come from somewhere, either on the site or somewhere else with with fencing or something like that. The footprint of a fence is pretty small. I mean, it's long and it blocks the view by some extent, but it's very narrow. A berm typically to build it up to the point where you're actually getting visual screening where it's six or seven feet tall is going to require quite a bit of earth because it can't be a foot wide or something like that. It's going to have to have slope to it. It also adds quite a bit of work for, in terms of maintenance, because you have to vegetate it so that the dirt doesn't run off when it snows or rains or something like that. And then they tend to just kind of change the visual impacts. They don't necessarily mitigate them. It's not like you don't see a lot of berms throughout the county. And so if we added one off State Highway seven, it's still something that stands out. It's just not a fence, but it kind of has the same impact as one, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was imagining maybe not six should be tall, but a combination of that and vegetation. I hear it makes sense. Any other questions for Sam?
This is Commissioner Shu. Is there a specific reason for the ten foot height versus nine foot, eleven foot? Something else?
So I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit and then I think that would be a good question to ask the applicant as well. I think they could probably speak to it a little bit more, but part of the supplemental narrative was describing it both as a preventative measure to keep trash within the facility when the wind starts blowing. And also it's, it's more difficult for animals to get over. So again, part of the expansion is that we're adding a, a small facility to allow people to bring in their composting. So ideally the, the tight fitting lid that was mentioned in the project narrative will prevent smells from getting out of that, but animals smell a lot better than people do. And so the other part of the tall fence is that it just is more discouraging for animals trying to get into the facility at nighttime or something like that.
Any other questions before we hear from you?
Commissioner, one more question. It wasn't clear to me if the hard to recycle materials is also a new feature that would be provided by this expansion that isn't available today in this waste transfer facility.
I'm not sure about that. You'll have to ask the applicant.
Yeah, that's like, it's on the site, on the site plan proposal. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions. Applicants to be allowed in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Looks like Seth Jacobs and a couple of other folks.
Yes, this is Anna Milner staff. Both Seth and Don Ash are currently being promoted. And Seth and Don, you should be able to speak and show your video whenever you're ready.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me all right? Great. I'm Seth Jacob, someone with Public Works. I'm a project architect for the county. I was selected by the Resource Conservation Division to help out with this project. I just want to thank Sam for giving a great presentation and seems like you covered everything. Excellent. And I was hired to design an expansion for the site. This is something that RCD has been pushing for several years. You know, the site is, is functioning well, but it's just not quite big enough for the amount of use up there. And there was some funding that was provided a few years ago for zero waste diversion. It supports the public health hub and spoke model for providing recycling to rural residents of Colorado and also it supports the commissioner's climate action strategic priority. So this is a very important project, I think, to provide expanded service for these mountain residents. I appreciate all the recommendations during your review. We are currently working to incorporate a lot of those into revising the site plan. I understand your concerns. It is a beautiful part of Colorado and Boulder County. And we want to do everything we can to preserve that corridor. And also I really appreciate somebody from their referrals calling out that there is a wonderful ponderosa tree on site that we hope to save. I would like to redesign the site plan so that we can incorporate that tree into the overall layout. And also this site is it's directly, it's in the corridor. It's also right next to C dot. So we have you know, their setback to make sure that we adhere to, which means we can't put too much development in that setback. So we're trying to make sure we don't start developing anything in their setback. And you know, because that would be a great place to, to put in more screening and, but we have to be very conscious of that setback. But we do have the opportunity on that west side and south side to put more landscaping. And we are proposing to do that. Also the site is, you know, we want to stay with some of the native vegetation up there. I know there was some questions about how we would propose to water some of these new plantings. And we would propose putting a HDP, like a high density plastic tank with a drip system during some of the plantings in the summer months to make sure that these things get established up there. I know there was questions about the height of the fence. If I could go on a little bit to what Sam said. The reason we're proposing such a tall fence, he covered, you know, the main reasons, which is keeping the wildlife out of the site. Also, we want to make sure that there's not any illegal dumping that happens up there. Because if the fence is very low, potentially somebody could pull a truck up, stand on the truck bed, dump whatever out over the fence. That was a concern of RCD. And yeah, we do not want to have trash blown around the site. It is an existing fence that's up there at that same height. And if we did put the chain link in, we would like to propose making it a forest green color to help it blend in with the conifers up there. Trying to think the other questions that were brought up. Yeah, no privacy slats. Sam went over that because of the, the wind loads that could be on the fence. And as far as the hard to recycle component, this is something that has been provided at other transfer sites. We essentially have a Connex up there where they can store styrofoam or mattresses or things like that. So just to have that extra storage up on site. It's something that's currently available in Netherlands, but we would like to have that option up in Allen's Park as well. Let's see what else was brought up. Yeah, the ten foot fence, I think Commissioner Shu brought it up. I think going any lower than ten feet. It's just the bears are pretty smart up there. I would worry they might be able to get over the fence if it's any you know, less than ten feet. But we do plan on accommodating a lot of the, the recommendations on the site with the screening. Also, Sam talked about making sure our fences stay within the setback. That's all going to be part of the revised, the revision of the site plan as well. That's all I have at this moment unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Seth. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner McMonan, just, just one question. Do you have any like concerns or thoughts like a, almost like a construction fencing screen, like a, a green, like a mesh material that would maybe give some kind of block to visibility of the interior? But you know, would also allow wind to come through so you don't have a fence getting ripped down? You think that's a possibility? Or is there a material like that you think could work?
I would say that if we talk to a structural engineer, they might be able to give us a better idea what would that mean as far as foundation for the, for the fence structure. I'd say it would add a little bit of lateral load to it, but maybe it could be accommodated. And we would be willing to entertain that idea to try to screen the site. For sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Open the public hearing. Procedures, all members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the final mission. Once those who signed up in advance spoken, I will call for any members of the public to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting the first name, last name, address and the docket number in chat box, box to the right. As each person who has joined by computer and signed up to speak is unmuted, Zoom will adjust your participant status so that you can speak and be seen via video. Once you're finished speaking, Zoom will place you back as an attendee. If you dial into the meeting via phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine and we will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. When it is your turn, system will request that you unmute yourself with star six. Once you are unmuted, please state your name and address for the record before product comment. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. The timer will be at the end of your speaking time. Reminder that comments are to be limited to the specific document item being discussed and common courtesy will be observed. And I think I see Mr. Yagi is the one who signed up. But I did not see him last time I looked.
It's Anna Milner staff. That's correct. Mr. Yagi doesn't seem to be present. We do have a member of the public signed in via, or dialed in via phone. Excuse me. I believe it's Mr. Street. Mr. Street, I've now allowed you to speak and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Zach Street and my address is one four eight seven seven, Highway seven in Allen's Park. It's a summer cabin on Cowbell Hill. Directly to the east of the Allen's Park Waste Transfer Site. It's actually been a summer cabin for our family since nineteen twenties. I do want to point out that while a lot of talk has been about the view to the peak to peak highway, there are five residences to the east that have a direct view of the Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station. And we've not really enjoyed it since nineteen eighties. But I do want to thank you for the opportunity and the flexibility and sensitivity to this topic. I do want to point out that doubling the size of the transfer site will have an impact on those of us that see it every day. I think a comment was just recently made that the site is functioning well. So I'm not sure, I guess my comment is does doubling the size, is that a requirement? And would request that the commissioners consider asking whether current needs or future needs can be fit within an existing site or perhaps at less than double capacity. It's been noted a couple of times in addition to the old Lazy Age Ranch. I don't know the new name of it just a moment ago, but a scenic byway score of five. But also it's frankly, the view from my front porch, which makes it a score of ten. If I can make it eleven, I'd say that. And so really would love to see this frankly move, but knowing that's not necessarily possible. Would like to either kind of keep it at the same scope and size. And if that's not a possibility, I'd like to make a couple of comments in terms of considerations that I would like to be considered. One, there was talk about this fence. Chain link is see-through. The wind comes through Allen's Park at about a million miles per hour. Understand that. But looking at roll-off dumpsters, either from the highway or from our own home is not advisable nor interesting. I am concerned about the bulk plane changing with fill dirt, both in terms of spreading the size of the dump, as we call it to north, south as well, which would expand it from our view perspective, but also the fill dirt will make it so it's higher up, which I think is concerning. Also want to comment about trash and wildlife. Bears do access the dump through the gates, not over the top. And so I would like for there to be considerations for having a more secure perimeter. And then finally want to make the comment that while I appreciate vegetation, both on the west side, I'd like to see it on the east side as well. But vegetation does not grow well at eighty-six hundred feet. So the primary blocking would have to be fencing or So the primary blocking would have to be fencing or birmingham because I don't see trees growing. You, you see that 200 year old pine or ponderosa pine. Um, it's just, uh, I think that you can put cisterns up there, but, uh, uh, we won't get vegetation coverage while I'm still alive. So thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Uh, looks like we have one more of a comment from Ms. Jost.
Hello, Ms. Yost. You should be able to speak whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sheri Yost, I'm the park planner at Rocky Mountain National Park. Our headquarters address is 1,000 US Highway 36 in Estes Park. Thank you so much for allowing us to attend and for sending us the information on this. I do have a question for Mr. Jacobs. Can you talk a little bit more about the solar panel that's going to be on the flat vault toilet? And if that is going to potentially eliminate the need for the turbine in the future, I think what you are trying to power is probably related to the buildings that are out there and nothing more. So we're, we are concerned as the plant, as the parks and open space were about that turbine, which I know isn't on this current plan, but I may have missed something related to the solar panels on the vault.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jacobs, if we, if we can hold your response, we'll go ahead and
okay.
Get any public testimony and then you'll have a chance to respond. So, uh, Ms. Yost, do you have any other comments? Okay. So here are another comments. Uh, Anna, do we have, yeah, anyone else signed up?
This is Anna Milner staff confirming that no, we do not have any further members of the public sign up to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Yost is not present. Though it breaks my heart to close public comment without, oh, I actually need to still get a response before I close public comment. Is that right? Uh, okay. Yeah. So we will now give staff and applicant chance to clarify comments.
Uh, thank you, commissioners, and thank you, members of the public. Sam Walker, CPMP planner. So I think most of, uh, maybe what should be addressed in this section is probably going to be good to Mr. Jacobs, but I did want to talk about, maybe just make a suggestion that we could probably accommodate some vegetative screening of some kind along the eastern boundary of the expanded footprint as well. To maybe alleviate some of those visual concerns. I will say the primary concern at the staff level was visual impacts to peak to peak because that's generally where we're going to focus. Uh, but we would certainly be open to, uh, requiring some additional screening along the eastern boundary of the transfer station. I didn't really think there was anything else that I needed to address, or I think maybe some things could be better addressed by Mr. Jacobs, but of course I, I am available for any questions if the commissioners have any.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Jacobs, responses?
Seth Jacobs here. Yes, uh, to address Zach Street's comments and concerns. I think doing some screening on the east side of the site could be accommodated. Either with vegetation or potentially some mesh screening on the 10 foot tall fence if it deems to be, uh, I guess, not a structural problem, uh, with the lateral loads out there. And also he had a question about the need to expand on site. The reason for expansion, at least one of them, is because we don't have enough bins on the site. If we add more bins, it would reduce the amount of truck traffic on site because they wouldn't have to come and pick these things up more frequently. So we get a little more efficiency from that and reduce some of the travel for the transport. So that was a big reason for the expansion, also expanding services to the local communities up there with composting and potentially more capacity for trash and recycle. And also making sure the site is meets ADA compliance with recycling. That's why we're proposing the aluminum deck and ramp system up there. So those things have been on the books for a while to make sure that happens. And we, we understand your concerns visually seeing this from your properties to the east. So we would like to accommodate those concerns and with landscaping or, uh, screening for the fence. So looking at Sheri Yost's comments, um, she was concerned with what the solar panels are for. Are they going to offset, um, the office and the restroom? We are proposing solar panels for the office as well as potentially the vault toilet just to offset those two elements on the site. The wind turbine has been deleted from the site design at this point. It was more just a placeholder to make sure that we left options, um, in case more sustainable practices were needed for the site. If we decided to put a wind turbine on, it would be in the future and we would go through planning commission for that at a future date. So hopefully that answered your questions. And is there anything else?
Okay, thank you for that. Um, as I started to say, uh, I, it breaks my heart to close the public hearing without hearing from Mr. Yagi, but such as across the news there. Uh, so the public hearing is closed and we will move on to discussion amongst the planning commissioners.
Commissioner Booth, though, can I ask, this is Commissioner McMillan. Can I ask just one question of staff?
Sure.
There, there was some suggestions that maybe the site plan would change or things would change, um, based on the, the comment today. I just want to know kind of, we're voting on what's in front of us today. If there are amendments to the way this, this really looks, is that going to come back through to us or is there a certain amount of amendment that can happen between now and the county commissioners? And I'd say this mostly for the, for the applicants benefit to just figure out the, the best process to get them, um, through this without having to come back around.
Sure, uh, Sam Walker, CPMP. So the, the intention at this point is that the applicants will revise their plans after the Boulder, excuse me, after the Board of County Commissioners hearing, um, assuming that the application moves forward with the recommended conditions of approval. Uh, we did have a discussion earlier this week and I know they're working on uh, some revised plans to maybe reflect a little bit of what we've asked for. I'm not sure if those plans will be ready and in time to make it as a noticed part of the Board of County Commissioners hearing. So I know they're working on them. I know they have some, but I, I don't necessarily think that they're in a place where we really need to discuss them today. Um, but the plans that they showed me are, are definitely making an effort to meet the, the conditions that we've recommended. So I know that they're working toward that. I just, I encourage them not to show them today because I didn't want to give you unfinished plans that you were trying to, to review in some capacity without seeing them beforehand.
Okay, uh, that's fair. So I guess my, my question to state differently is there's nothing like, like a change of an entrance or a totally different configuration of the site plan that we're not seeing. It's just some of the conditions of approval.
Correct. Yeah, it was mostly added vegetative screening.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have discussion amongst commissioners.
Uh, Commissioner Whitney. I like the benefits that this brings to the community in terms of adding not only more capacity, but maybe some new facilities like compost or hard to recycle materials. And, uh, it's good to see the applicant working with the community to address some of the screening concerns.
Yeah, Commissioner McMillan, to add on to that, I think my primary goal of the action that we take today would be to find a way to get some solid screening. And I think it was a good comment from a member of the public about, um, the fact that vegetation just doesn't really grow quickly, uh, if at all at this elevation. And, um, so I, I think we should, um, I would recommend that we, um, find a way to, to get some screen, uh, built into the fence with something that's solid in some fashion. I don't know the design, but that's kind of where my head is, is leaning.
Commissioner Bluefield, I agree with that. I kind of wonder if there's, is there a possibility of, of doing a, a shorter, more solid fence that would scream kind of the lower part. You don't have, you have the chain link to protect against bears and you don't have as much wind impact for the shorter fence. Uh, but I definitely appreciate the applicant being willing to work with with the local residents, both for screening, uh, from the highlight, but also the residents that are in that. Anyone else have discussion or motion?
Um, I, I can make one. I'm, I'm trying to, I'd like to just insert this, this, um, idea of having a, a solid fence into the motion and pausing some, trying to find uh, which conditions needs of that. But I could also just make the motion and say that we'd like to add a condition that says that. So maybe I'll just do it the easy way and have someone else figure out the worrying. But I'm ready to make a motion if you all are ready. If there's no further discussion, go for it. Okay, I move that the planning commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SU 21 dash 0008. Boulder County Allen's Park Waste Transfer Station Expansion with the 12 conditions in the staff report. And one additional condition that the applicant will work with staff to present a option with a fence that, um, provides screening, uh, in addition to, um, protection of the site, visual screening.
Commissioner Fitch, I second that motion.
Sam, I think a roll call vote, uh, Mark Greenfield, I, Sam Fitch.
Yes, I.
So Gavin McMillan. Is that an I?
I.
Uh, David Chu.
Hi.
Connor Kennedy.
Hi.
Chris Fittany.
Hi.
And Lee Shingar.
Hi.
All right. Madam Slay, that ends our last last docket. Uh, does Stephanie have any other items for us before we adjourn?
This is Summer Frederick, CPMP. We do not.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn.
I move the adjourn. Does Commissioner again?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you all.